It's, we're glad to have you here tonight. It is June 26th and this is our zoning public hearing. And we'd like to call the meeting to order. This evening, Madam Clerk, there is a need to approve, to amend the agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair, and before we get started tonight, I would like to acknowledge that there are two applications. One is asking for a withdrawal from the process and the other is asking for a deferral. And so if there, is there a representative on behalf of Danny Herman here tonight? Okay, and are you Mr. Herman? Are you Mr. Herman, are you the applicant? So I just want to confirm that your request to the board is as to withdraw from the process. Okay, thank you. And so the next item would be for rezoning case 2025-06. And the applicant is Rebecca Haynes, but I think that there's an agent here tonight on the behalf. And your request is to defer this item until the July zoning public hearing, correct? Okay, so the request of the board tonight would be to, if they agree with these requests, to please amend the agenda to allow item number three to be withdrawn from the process. And for rezoning item 2025-06 to be deferred until the July public hearing in front of the Board of Commissioners.
What, alright, alright, let's take these one more time-
Okay.
-as they're listed on the agenda. And please read out the address so that anybody in the audience that's here for those hearings would be made aware.
Yes, Madam Chair, and so for item three, this would be rezoning case 2025-05. It's a request to rezone 1.327 acres from C2 General Commercial to C1 Local Commercial for the development of an assisted living facility. This would be located on Parker Road. And the request is to withdraw this item.
Okay.
And for item four, it would be rezoning case 2025-06. The request is to rezone 53.32 acres from R1 Single Family Residential to CRS Collaborative Residential Subdivision for a 94-lot Single Family Residential Subdivision. The location is 1405 Southwest Smyrna Road, 1375 Southwest Smyrna Road, 1901 Southwest Flat Shoals Road, Southwest Still Meadow Road, 1301 Southwest Still Meadow Road, and 1320 Southwest Still Meadow Road. And the request from the applicant is to defer that item until the July zoning public hearing.
Okay, so can we take these motions independently to remove them, please?
So the motion on behalf of the board would be to amend the agenda to have item three, which is rezoning case 2025-05, to withdraw from the process.
Alright.
So I move to, I move to amend the agenda to remove item 2025-05.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. All in favor to withdraw their request. Aye. The motion carries.
Okay, and then the second vote tonight would be for the board to amend their agenda to have item 2025-06 to deferred and, to be deferred until the July zoning public hearing.
Alright, Madam Chair, I move that we amend the agenda to have item 2025-06 deferred into our July meeting.
My second to motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk, I think the intent to defer was for working with people in the community.
So that is correct. And the applicant is here if you would like to address the board tonight. They wanted time to set up meetings with the community and I think they have one set up.
Yes, we have a, we have one set up to have at the church on Thursday, July 10th from 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock. And we brought flyers to give to everybody so that they would have those and so that we can talk through different things. I've, I've met with a lot of the people from the last meeting to this meeting and met a lot of the neighbors since the last meeting. They've made suggestions with a plan. And the things that I, we agree would be beneficial for the surrounding homes to lower the overall density to match an adjacent subdivision. We've heard the community's concerns. We believe that more buffer around the subdivision, that there'll be many benefits to the surrounding homes. So we have this meeting planned at Rockdale Baptist Church in the Fellowship Hall, Thursday, July 10th from 6:00. We're opening for question and answers to the community. We would like to postpone for one month and table this to the next meeting so that we can make adjustments to the plan to put more buffers and to reduce some homes out of the development and put buffers around the properties.
Thank you.
And so just for further clarification, the next Board of Commissioners zoning public hearing that he's referring to will be on Thursday, July 24th in this room at 6:00 PM.
Very good, thank you.
So I just wanted to also state for the record, since we're talking about these two items, so those two cases will not be heard tonight. The next one will be heard in July.
Thank you.
So did we vote on that?
We do. Yes.
It needs to be removed from the agenda.
Yeah, we voted on that. Or did we just make a motion?
You need to make a motion.
We voted.
We did.
Yeah, right.
Sorry. Alright, very good.
Thank you. So that brings us to item three, approval of the minutes.
Alright.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from March 27, 2025.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. There's no, the rules of procedure for public hearings, please.
Can't hear it. Can't hear that, can we? There we go.
It's coming.
In the order that it appears on the agenda. Each speaker must sign their name to the appropriate zoning case sheet and fill out a public comment card to register your intent to speak prior to the start of this meeting. Each item of business shall be handled in the order that it appears on the agenda unless upon a motion of the Board of Commissioners, the order is changed. A member of the planning staff will present each item to the Board of Commissioners. The zoning applicant or agent will state their name and address at the podium and will have 10 minutes in which to make his or her presentation. Any portion of their 10 minutes may be reserved for rebuttal following the opposition to the application. After the applicant's presentation, all registered speakers who wish to speak in favor of the application will then be heard. Prior to speaking upon the item, each registered speaker will state their name and address at the podium. They will also be limited to a total of 10 minutes. Once the applicant has made his or her presentation and the speakers in favor of the application have been heard, the secretary will then call upon the registered speakers in opposition to the application. The opposition shall likewise be limited to a total of 10 minutes. Once the public hearing portion is closed, no other speakers will be heard. After all public comments have been heard, the board may elect to hold a general discussion. However, no discussions will be rendered at this hearing. Decisions will be made at the next regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting.
Alright.
Okay, so we have one item that is under unfinished business and that is rezoning case 2024-28. This is a case that has been re-banded from the court to be heard again by the Board of Commissioners. And so the planning staff is here tonight to present that item and then the applicant will present that item as well, following the planning staff.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The first item on our agenda, of course-
Will you introduce yourself and the team with you, please?
Of course.
Thank you.
Laura Parker, I'm the Deputy Director of Planning and Development. And here I have Deputy Doug Chandler. He is our Deputy Director of Code Enforcement. We have our Business Analyst, Ms. Carolyn Blackshear. And we have Aisha Paul. She is- That's it, there we go, Administrative Operations. Sorry, Aisha, very important position.
Thank you, yes.
And so as I said, our first, first item on this agenda today is the rezoning for 2024-28. The property address is 1929 Southwest Oglesby Bridge Road. The applicant is Stephen Goodsell. The applicant is requesting to rezone 10 acres of a 44.76-acre parcel from AR, which is the Agricultural Residential, to C1 Local Commercial for the Neighborhood Commercial Development. This case was previously heard on November 7th, 2024 as a two-part case where the applicant asked for the adjoining properties to be rezoned from AR to R1, which is a Single Family Residential. And this parcel in question is to be rezoned from Agricultural Residential to Local Commercial. The Planning Commission Board denied both requests. However, the Board of Commissioners approved the residential request and referred the commercial request back to the Planning Commission Board. Then on January 9th of 2025, the PC Board heard the request again for just the commercial aspect and recommended approval with conditions. The BLC denied this request on February 11th of 2025. The parties agreed to remand this matter so the board may reconsider the application for rezoning. This subject property is surrounded by residential and commercial properties seen on the zoning map. The portion of the property in question already has a future land use designation for neighborhood commercial. The site plan shows the concept for both the residential and commercial developments, where the portion that is up for rezoning is highlighted in the yellow where the stars, where the stars are. All internal and external reviews were received with no major comments for most departments except for two. The first department was the Department of Trans, Department of Transportation, which requires that the applicant coordinate with GDOT on Georgia Highway 212 and recommended a decel lane for Oglesby Bridge Road. The second was the Water and Sewer Department. They stated that there is an existing water main along Georgia Highway 212, Southwest and Oglesby Bridge Road Southwest, but there is no public wastewater. So again, the applicant is requesting to rezone from Agricultural Residential to Local Residential for a Neighborhood Commercial Development, which is on largely undeveloped track. The properties across the street are Zone C1 and are developed with a gas station, a print shop, a service repair garage, a restaurant, a fit, and a fitness center. And as such, a Neighborhood Commercial Development would be suitable to view on the adjacent uses and would be compatible with the small commercial node that has developed at the intersection of Georgia Highway 212 Southwest and Oglesby Bridge Southeast and is not likely to have a negative impact on surrounding properties and the existing streets. With this in mind, the staff approved for under 10, under 10 conditions, including some prohibited uses. And the Planning Commission recommended approval with amended conditions. I can read the conditions into record if Madam Chair would like.
I would. And can you clarify for me before you do that? On the land use map, the recommendation is Neighborhood Commercial, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And of the 44.76-acre parcel, 10 acres they're asking for rezoning from AR to C1, what about the 34.76 acres?
The rest of those, I believe that would be still concerted based on the agr, the residential. That, I think that that's what they were still proposing on that one, but this is just for-
But there's no zoning request for the rest of the 34 acres?
This is just for the commercial-
And the 34 acres are not included in what's already been approved?
Nothing to do with it, based on the request tonight.
Okay, thank you. So if you would read those, that would be great.
Um, for the first recommendation, the site shall comply with the local C1 zoning district in accordance with the Unified Development Ordinance Regulations that existed at the time of filing of the application for rezoning. The county recognizes that the changes to the UDO set forth in ordinance 0-2025-03 do not comply, apply to the property. The county acknowledges the property can be used as a gas station with convenience store. The legal description of the property shall conform to the preliminary plat submitted in connection with the residential development of the adjacent property. Three, the applicant shall provide the traffic impact study with the land disturbance permit application. Any recommendations for improvements shall be required to be shown on the land disturbance permit. Additionally, as determined by the Rockdale County Department of Transportation, a new study may be required for the development. Any recommendations for improvements from any new studies shall be required to be shown on the LDP. Four, the applicant must obtain environmental health approval prior to the issuance of an LDP. Five, provide a five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk along Oglesby Bridge Road Southwest and Georgia Highway 212 Southwest rightways. A strip of grass or other approved landscape material at least four feet in width shall separate sidewalks from adjacent curbs on public streets. Six, all grassed areas shall be sodded. Seven, all utilities shall be placed underground. Eight, stormwater detention ponds shall be screened from view from adjoining residential properties. Screening plans shall be subject to review and approval by the Director of Planning and Development. General, and nine, the general uses shall be permitted with the exception of the following uses. A, for vape store, B, for liquor stores, C, for small box dollar-type stores, defined as a retail establishment characterized by offering a diverse range of products at consistently discounted prices within a space of less than 12,000 feet, which features a mix of household goods, personal care items, food, and seasonal products. Notable examples include Dollar Tree, Family Dollar, and General, and General Dollar. This prohibition in this zoning condition does not include drugstores, small grocery stores, produce stands, convenience stores, and retail establishments exceeding 12,000 square feet in size and those that are expressively permitted on the property. And D, beauty supply stores. And 10, the applicant shall add bollards to the front facade of all the buildings. And we also have the applicant here.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. It's a little deja vu here that I think this is the 14th hearing on this property, so I'm not gonna belabor the dirty details. Our attorneys pointed that out as she was required to go back and watch all the fun for the last year or so. But anyway, we did appeal the decision for denial. And we have tried to work from a point, starting where we were last, which was, of course, we had the, as staffs pointed out, we had the future land use map calling for Neighborhood Resident, Neighborhood Commercial. We had the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval with conditions. We had the staff's recommendation for approval with conditions. Now, what we've done is we've discussed different conditions that might make this a better plan in the eyes of the Commission. In addition to what everybody, the staff and Planning Commission had voted to approve before, we added the prohibitions on the dollar stores and we added some other items that I think make this a better fit for the neighborhood and for the Commission. So we ask that you look at this in its totality and look at the fact that we are surrounded by a similar zoning, asking for uses that are similar to what's across the street, catty-cornered from us and all around us. We're not, we're not opening up anything new here. We're doing exactly what our neighboring properties have been allowed to do. And I guess it, at this point, it'd be time for me to point out the constitutional objection. The Ben C. and I, the owner and I as applicant, are objecting to the current zoning as a violation of Mr. C.'s rights to get fair use of his property. The, the staff's recommendations, I think we can call that the June 26, 2025 staff recommendations. We would, we would be glad to adhere to all of the recommendations that are within that. And if it gets beyond that, we reserve our right to continue the appeal. I'd like to reserve the remainder of my time and I'll answer any questions at any time that you guys have it.
Do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do.
Okay.
Good evening. So the original hearing that we had before, I had seen a map for property that was presented that was actually not the corner itself. It was a parcel back. So I don't know if it was mislabeled or what, but in the previous hearing, what I saw for the parcel would have been further back. I don't know which one, 212 is, is this 212? It was actually this parcel back here, so not directly on the corner.
I'm not sure exactly what you were looking at, but the land use map, I think originally designated 15 acres. We've been working within that and at all times going all the way to the corner of Oglesby Bridge Road and Highway 212. And that's where we are tonight.
Do you think possibly the previous hearing, maybe it was a parcel further back that was part of the 15 acres?
No, and I'm, I'll, my, my engineer who draws those pictures for me is shaking his head, no. No, we've always been on the corner.
Okay. And if you'll repeat for me what your statement was about your, Mr. C.'s constitutional rights for his property?
Okay, we're renewing our constitutional objection. The current zoning is a violation of Mr. C.'s constitutional rights to fair use of his property.
Okay. And will you use that same thought process for the land use map stating Neighborhood Commercial and how people that live in that area also have a fair right to their property?
Everybody has a right to fair use of the property.
Right.
And that's, that's a constitutional right that we're all given. Somewhere you draw the line between what's your right and what somebody else's. We're trying to draw that line around our property. We're not, I, I often think that the NIMBY label is mislabeled, not in my backyard. No, I'm not trying to develop anybody's backyard. I'm trying to develop Mr. C.'s yard.
Right.
It's his land. He's paid property tax on it for 52 years and been a great steward of the land. And we very much want to do a quality commercial component of a mixed-use project. We are the most proximate neighbors to this project. The, the project that you guys may or may not remember, I, it's, it's been so many hearings, I forgot whether it was this board or the previous board that, that approved the residential. I think it was the previous board. We've got a lot of houses that are gonna have to be very expensive to pay for current development costs. And we have no intention of doing anything on that corner that would detract from the value we're cutting off our nose despite our face to do something that had a negative impact on value there. Nobody is more concerned in the neighborhood than Mr. C., who owns this property.
Okay. And what is, if you don't have access to public wastewater, is that what I heard earlier that was stated? So not, you don't have connection to sewer, what's the plan for that?
It would be a septic system, the same as the properties across the street, catty-cornered from us, the same as the Publix on 212 at 138. It's not unusual. It's not, it's not necessarily desirable. We'd all like sewer everywhere we could get it. It simplifies our lives immensely. But, and we were trying to bring sewer to this project. But our original request was for 240 units, which was enough density to pay the roughly $1,500,000 to bring sewer from the Scott Creek Plant to this. We got more than cut in half from 240 units to right now, we're looking at 92.
Wow.
Can't even come close to paying. It's, this is a marginal deal. With the density we have, the widths of the lots get so wide that the pavement per lot with the current cost of paving, it's really difficult. And there's a reason why you guys have not had a whole lot of development here lately. It's because it's so difficult to do cost-effectively. And Mr. C. and I have been working for three, three and a half years trying to allow him to, you know, finally sell his property that he's owned for so long and paid property taxes on for so long. We've been trying to come up with something that was, recognized Mr. C.'s rights to use his property while being aware of the, the surrounding properties. What we're asking for, what we're doing in residential is probably gonna be on a dollar basis, more expensive than everything around it. The commercial would likely be, no, would certainly be well beyond the commercial that's currently in the, in the area. The, most of you probably have driven by and are aware of what the, the convenience store across the street and its various empty shops looks like. We have no interest in doing anything like that. That'd be a negative to our houses, not a positive. Our hope is if we do something very nice, the folks across the street would either have to up their game or we might take their business. So from that standpoint too, I think that we are gonna be good for the intersection, good for the neighborhood and the availability of some, some goods and services available within walking distance without having to walk across 212 is an asset to our neighborhood.
Alright, and can you tell us a little bit about why, if our land use map says Neighborhood Commercial, that you wouldn't have applied for that?
We did. Neighborhood Commercial is a land use category.
Correct.
C1 is a zoning category. C1 appropriately fits underneath Neighborhood Residential, I mean, excuse me, Neighborhood Commercial. And in fact, the only commercial that is allowed in Neighborhood Commercial is C1. So that's all we got.
Okay.
So it's, there's no other alternative. The land use map is suggesting that what we're asking for is in order as our, as the Planning Commission staff have, have said as well.
Okay.
With the conditions.
Okay. Very good. And can you tell us a little bit about what your plan for development is ideally?
On the, overall or the commercial specifically?
The commercial specifically.
Okay, we've, we've been in talks with various retailers. We don't have a deal yet. Typically, they don't wanna do much in the way of spending time, money, and effort on an unzoned property.
Right.
So we will seek a combination of retailers that will both maximize the value of the residential behind us and maximize the value of the commercial in the corner.
Okay. Alright, and this, this project would be, I think you mentioned maybe a gas station would be one more retail front? Or what size, do we have an idea of what that would look like, size-wise?
We don't. We've got consultants looking now at what the appropriate size for the market that we have there. And we're gonna rely on that to design that component.
Okay. Alright, very good. Thank you.
So are there questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, do we have anybody signed up to speak tonight?
Yeah. Is that all?
We have five. Our first one is Mr. Ben C.
Okay, so if we could put the timer up? You? Oh, you're good?
No.
Okay. Okay. Good, you can go to the next one. Thank you.
Okay, our next one is Deborah Gearing.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Next one would be James Corbett.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is James Corbett. I live at 1617 Claremont Lane in Manchester, which is right across Highway 212. I live at 1617 Claremont Lane in Manchester, which is right across Highway 212 from the property in question. Well, it's Groundhog Day again. I stand before you tonight to ask you to again deny this rezoning from AR to commercial without the exclusion of a gas station. While Rockdale County itself finds themselves a defendant of a civil suit related to this, we, the community, have not changed our objection to the idea of another gas station at that location. Our concerns about the development are the same as we presented last year. Now, throughout this entire process of Sea Farms, I've taken care not to disparage either of the two gentlemen that are working this. I mean, Mr. C. I know wants to leave a legacy for his children and grandchildren, and I respect that. I get that. I lost my parents recently and it's, I've been the gift, I've received the gift of a generational blessing from them, so I understand what you're trying to do here. However, those of us that live in this area also want to leave a legacy to the future residents of Rockdale County, and that's a community that's livable and sustainable. And it's not overwhelmed with the development that doesn't add benefit. The two gentlemen, Mr. Goodsell and Mr. C., have said they only want to do things that add to the community, and they have been, y'all have both been very good to work with the community. We had a Zoom meeting and we were talking about the commercial development and they said that they would be open to putting restrictions on what types of businesses would be there. I think at one point, Mr. C. even said, you know, what we think of a chicken salad chick moving in there is a way of enticing us. Well, that chicken salad's kind of turned into chicken scratch at this point. We submitted a list of businesses that the community did and did not want to see at that intersection. We presented those to the developer and to the Board of Commissioners. And one of the top items on that list was a gas station. It quickly became clear from the latest meetings that that's the target business for that location, a gas station, or as has been said, a convenience store that sells gas. And that's probably because really, that's the only feasible business that will survive there. I made note, was mentioned earlier about the businesses at that location, and there was mention of a fitness center and a print shop. Well, those have both been out of business for over a year. The restaurant is a trailer. The restaurant, they have had a taco truck recently. There are multiple empty storefronts within a five-mile radius of there. Businesses just don't survive there. The only one that has survived is the old Aaron's Grocery Texaco, which is now a Shell Station. So, yes, this location does have a long-term commercial designation in the future land use map, but that doesn't mean it has to be now, because there's nothing, there's no indication that a business can survive there other than that one gas station. What's so bad about a gas station? Well, if you look at the gas stations kind of located on these stretches of country road, you'll see that they're not the Quick Trips or Race Tracks that you see on Georgia 138 or Georgia 20. You see a lot of small independent gas stations that have a wide variety of products that they sell in order to survive. So, what you actually see is instead of just a convenience store that sells gas, you see a vape store that sells gas. You see a video poker location that sells gas. You see a liquor store that sells gas. And all of, a lot of those are already on the exclusion list that was shown earlier. Plus, there's no need for a gas station at that location, because there are at least 12 gas stations within a four-mile radius. Playing with Google Maps, I found that that was where I stopped counting. In the civil lawsuit that was filed against the county, it was stated that Mr. C. sees a convenience store that's on the going-home side of 212 would help ease traffic congestion at the intersection and also bring in tax dollars from Henry County. Well, when Mr. C. and Mr. Goodsell were trying to get the 240-home subdivision in at Sea Farms, they did a traffic study. And according to the traffic study, they said it wasn't congested. So, now suddenly it is? As for the going-home side of the intersection, I'm assuming that means traffic coming from DeKalb County and Georgia 138, that would be a right turn-in to that location and a right turn-out. But if you're coming from that location, there are already two other gas stations that are a right turn-in and a right turn-out at Georgia 138 and Highway 212. That's just five miles up the road. If traffic's coming from Henry County, it's already a right turn-in or right turn-out to the Shell Station that's already there. There's no need for a gas station at that intersection. This lawsuit is just a last-ditch attempt to try to strong-arm the county into acquiescing to a developer when they didn't get their way. The community isn't saying it can't be commercial. We're just saying we don't want a commercial use like a gas station that takes away from the community. We've heard a lot today about constitutional rights and right of doing what you see fit with your property. There is a process for that. They have been through the process, and it didn't go their way. We also have a process. I'm exercising it right now by petitioning my government for agreements I have. So, our reasons for this have not changed. And so, in spite of this lawsuit, we ask that you, the Commissioners, would deny this. Thank you.
Next, we have Charlotte Shatlock.
Thank you for listening to me. I have to defer to my previous speaker that he raised elegantly so many points that I agree with. When we were here seven months ago, we didn't want it then, and nothing has changed that would make us want it now. And as far as, and I also live in Rockdale County and have lived in Rockdale County since 1984. And I've watched Rockdale grow, and there's nothing wrong with growth, but let's not turn it into a total concrete asphalt place to live. And these gas stations, when they get put in, then the next thing you know is like their tanks are leaking, they get run down. And those businesses that Mr. Goodsell and Mr. C. were talking about that are on that corner, nothing survives there. And again, the pool company and the yoga fitness center that was there, it's like they couldn't make a go of it. The Little Wing Place that's there is a trailer, and yeah, it does do a good business. But the gas station that's across the street, you know, it's like a gas, it's, they sell lottery, they sell alcohol, and then they also sell gas, by the way. And next to it, it was a beauty shop, and it's been closed for I don't know how many years. And within that area also, with less than five miles, there's other businesses that just, the community just can't sustain. For example, on the corner of Oglesby Bridge Road and Georgia 20, there's a shopping center there, and they've had two or three types of grocery store chains that have moved into there. They've had a couple of restaurants that move into there, and they've just not been able to make it work. They finally turned it into a storage facility. And this is not the kind of thing that I want and the rest of the residents of Rockdale County want for their neighborhood, for their county, for their community. Mr. Goodsell and Mr. C., they don't live in Rockdale County. So, once they get finished with their financial aspect of this, it's like they're going to go on their merry way. And if their houses don't sell, they'll rent them, and then they will have landlords that don't live in the neighborhood. Typically, renters don't keep up their property.
I want to make sure we have enough time for whoever's left.
So, Madam Chair, just, I'm sorry to interrupt for just a moment. So, if the board would like, you could grant either side balance of time? So, you could extend the time, or we can have it at 10 minutes per side?
I'm pretty much finished, because I'm just really reiterating a lot of what was already said. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the community is in full agreement with this. Thank you.
We can add three minutes.
We're going to add total. You have two more speakers? One more. Okay. Oh. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, what we'll do is we'll add three minutes to each side.
Yes. So, we have one more. We have Ms. Sheri Faust.
I live at 2265 Armstrong Court, which runs off of Oglesby Bridge, about two miles from the intersection of 212 and Oglesby Bridge. And I object to the commercial development at that corner for most, for the same reasons that have already been stated. That community is largely made up of farm lots or large lots, and it's very rural in nature. There are gas stations all over. We just don't need another development like that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Would the applicant like to take the three minutes? Okay. Did you, did you have a remainder of time?
I feel like, I feel like yours was shorter than before.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll make it up.
I just wanted to recap one last time. We did reach out to the neighborhood and talk with them about what they would and would not want. And yes, it was towards the top of their list, if not the top of the list, they didn't want to store their sole gasoline. While we solicited their opinions, we didn't guarantee that we could give them everything they wanted. We wanted ideas of who we might approach that might be good for the community. If people were looking for it, then the retailers might, might well want to look at locating there. And as far as the negative stuff, he mentioned vapes. They're out on this. Of course, they're out on everything now.
Yes.
Liquor, we pulled that off. Poker, I don't, I don't know. And I'm not even sure if, if convenience stores that sell vapes are a vape store, we wouldn't want a store like that and would be happy to have restrictions around there. I know a bunch of folks have got up and say they like things as they are. They have fear that this is going to detract from their value. They've seen some frankly poorly-done retail development around there that is not an asset. I reiterate that we are our own closest neighbor, and we're highly motivated to put, putting businesses in there that add and don't subtract. We believe what we're asking for is fair within the context of Rockdale County's rules and regulations. Neighborhood commercial, if you read the description of it, it's part of the land use map, it goes into how neighborhood commercial, C1, it is created for handling local needs, minimizing trip times. Yes, there's gasoline four miles away. You can also buy milk and butter and bread four miles away. And you can go to the gas station across the street and buy some of those things. But if you live in the neighborhood we're creating behind it, you may well want to walk to get some of these things, allow your children, they were teenagers and old enough to be let out on their own, them an opportunity to walk to something and use something. There's a reason why the county contemplated neighborhood commercial. There's a purpose for neighborhood commercial, and we're working within that purpose, trying to put something there that allows Mr. C. the best use of his property and allows us the best project as a whole that includes residential and commercial. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Anything else from the board?
No.
Okay. So, we can move to the next item?
Our next case tonight is a future land use 2025-2 and also a rezoning of 2025-01. The property addresses are northeast Gee's Mill Road and northeast McCart Road. Our applicant is Tyler Lasser. This is a 49.8-acre underdeveloped property composed of four parcels. The applicant is asking to amend the future land use map category of three of the parcels from Technology Park to medium-density residential, with one of the parcels already listed for future land use as medium-density. The applicant is also requesting to rezone all four parcels from AR, which is the agricultural residential, to CRS, which is a collaborative residential subdivision, to allow the property to be developed with 81 lots for a single-family residential subdivision. The subject property is owned AR and is surrounded by AR and R1 zoning. The AR-zone property to the north is underdeveloped. The R1 subdivision to the south is Point Royal, is developed with lots that are 30,000 square feet to over an acre. The development proposes the following. 81 single-family residential lots at a minimum of 10,000 square feet, 54 front-entry lots, 27 side-entry lots. Unit prices starting in the low $400,000s. 16.2 acres of total green space and amenities to include interconnected walking trails, central parks, pocket parks, and dog parks. There is going to be a total of 348 total parking spaces with 324 residential parking spaces, I mean parking, 21 amenity parking with three handicap spaces. And there's also one proposed access point to the subdivision. The internal and external technical reviews were received, and they should be included in your packets. From the fire department, they have said that the proposed layout with the appropriate road width, fire hydrant spacing, and the no-parking fire lane signage is acceptable, and that the layout also allows for complete access around the building, which is a benefit in event of an emergency. The Board of Education says that this subdivision will not impact negatively on the high school nor the middle school. However, it will have an impact on the elementary school, with it being at 100% capacity at this time, and may cause the need for mobile units to be added to this school site.
And which elementary school?
I believe that's Hightower.
Really?
Mm-hmm. Stormwater Department said, based on the submitted rezoning documents, there are existing state water, wetland, and Rockdale County future floodplain requirements that must be adhered to for the federal, state, and county ordinances. Transportation stated that a 170-foot decelerated lane and 100-foot taper is needed for the construction of this subdivision. A streetlight layout is required for the newly-built subdivision and shall conform to all standards in code and design. Stormwater, I'm sorry, yes, Water and Storm Department said that the water and sewer availability at this project site and the developer's representative, CEC, provided a downstream sewer analysis that has been reviewed and approved by the Rockdale Water Resources. And based on the elevate, and the evaluation of the request, staff recommends approval for the future land use request and approval with eight conditions for the rezoning request. And the planning commission voted to approve staff's recommendation. Should I read the recommendation? Okay. The first recommendation is that the applicant shall abide by all applicable standards of the unified development ordinance for the CRS zoning district unless otherwise specified in these conditions or through approval of a variance of the zoning board of appeals. Buildings shall consist of brick, stone, and cementitious siding or rail stucco from ground to eaves with brick, stone, cedar shake, rail stucco, painted wood siding, or cementitious siding to be used as accents. Metal siding, vinyl siding, metal canopies, and exposed standard concrete blocks are prohibited. Sofits may be constructed of vinyl. Three, should the future land use and rezoning applications be approved, the applicant shall submit a combination plaque to the Department of Planning and Development to combine the parcels. Four, the development shall provide a 20-foot-wide natural undisturbed buffer adjacent to all residentially-zoned properties. Buffers shall be replanted where sparsely vegetated and shall be subject to review and approval of the Director and shall be subject to review and approval of the Director of Planning and Development. Five, a five-foot wide sidewalk shall be constructed on one side of the street. Six, all utilities shall be placed underground. Seven, all grass areas on dwellings shall be sodded. Eight, natural vegetation shall remain on the property until the issuance of the development permit. And we also have the applicant here.
Thank you. And so, Madam Chair, Commissioners, just as a matter of order tonight, there are two applications before you, a land use amendment and a rezoning request amendment. So each side will be allotted 20 minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Alex Mitchum, LJA Engineering. I'm not Tyler Lasser. He would probably laugh if he heard y'all calling me Tyler tonight, but anyway, professional address is 299 South Main Street, Alpharetta, with offices in Winder and also in Beaufort. So appreciate staff's thorough review of this, working with Ms. Parker and her staff for several months now. We originally submitted this back, wow, it's probably close to the first of the year. But prior to that, we wanted, we had some comments from staff with transportation, water and sewer. So went and did a lot of upfront preliminary engineering work upfront so we could answer a lot of the questions before we got here tonight. So reflects that in the staff reports, because where there's capacity there, transportation issues have, we've already kind of addressed those and acquired some easements from adjacent adjoining properties, so there's no line of sight issues. And so we can, we feel safe about that. As stated here, it's 81 units. We started off with closer to 100 units, but we've reduced those. We could reduce those for a couple of reasons. One, staff made it clear to us that it was desirable for the county to have larger lots, wider lots. And that's why you have the 70s and 70-foot wide and 80-foot wide lots, so we can accommodate some side entry garages. That's similar to like Port Royal and some of the other developments right there in that, in that area. It's a beautiful piece of property, so we felt like the collaborative zoning was probably most appropriate to, to apply for. That way, we can incorporate more of the open space, protect a lot of the natural features on there, because it's got some beautiful creeks and stuff on there, and also have the centrally located park and connect those parks with a central greenway. Having the trails, mulch trails around the perimeter, and also the dog park was something that we, we hit upon. We had a community meeting back, I believe, close to the first of this month. We didn't have a lot of participation there, but we had, had some folks there. Generally, it was, it was, it was a well-received and good conversation. Planning Commission was a good discussion of two. They brought up a couple of items, you know, as far as the, the homes themselves, which we did submit a plan book. They had some of the elevations and examples of what Blue River and some of their partners, what they do with their square footage. Again, I know she's covered that, the price points, and they're starting the low fours and, and on up.
We don't have any examples of the plan book tonight?
I can, you can have mine if you want.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Again, it's a large document, so sometimes that doesn't email well, so, but we try to be as thorough and provide as much detail as we possibly can. I think this is important to note that over a third of this property is going to be in open space, so it's not, you know, we're not, we're preserving a lot of the open space that we can. Again, it's, there's some sensitive areas on this property that we want to protect. Also, we want to clean up the property. It's been there. McCart Road has not been maintained for some time, and there are some, there are some dumping and such on the property that my clients and all, once we get started, if, you know, if things moving forward, we'll get cleaned up. Again, it's five pocket parks on the property. Long welcoming park, if you will, because it kind of is narrow as you first enter the property, so we're, we're going to landscape and put a park-type avenue, boulevard as you come in, so you can see that. There'll be an open playfield on that centrally located park there, right there as you come in. I think it'll be a nice amenity. And also, like you mentioned, the dog park. And all these parks will be connected by trails and the indoor sidewalks. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, or I'll reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal.
Okay. Quick question. This is not the same request that's in the back of McCart's landing, correct?
I don't think so. This is separate. Is that right?
That's correct. Yeah, this is independent. Yeah, I'm not aware of that one.
Just trying to clarify. And these properties would be for sale versus?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that. I want to make that, I have that written down here.
Yes, very important. And, let's see. So in the style book that I saw, there's a combination of masonry work and hardy plank, I think, in some of them?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so there would be a variety of more than one finish on the houses, correct?
Yes, ma'am. We, we are in agreeance with the planning commission, staff's recommended conditions for the architectural treatments. Again, we, we want to bring something that was compatible to that area. Also, the extra time we spent with staff, we, we understand the expectations that Rockdale County has for us, and we, we can appreciate that. So we think it's a unique development. Don't see anything quite like that in this area right now with the amount of open space. So it's exciting. I'm anxious to see how, how it goes.
Can you tell us, for the citizens' benefit, where else they might see a subdivision that, that you've done before?
We've done some here in Rockdale. It's been some time, actually. We've done more commercial by company. We've been rebranded from what we were to LJA, as it were. Blue River, they've worked with a lot of the local builders, developers, and the nationals surrounding the metro area. So that was, question was asking me of planning commission, and I, you know, it's kind of those things that I, I'm happy to mention some of them, but some of them you may not like, or some of you may love, and so.
Yeah, okay.
That's why I asked the question. Which ones do you like? I may have done those.
Yes. Well, I, I think the point of the question really was, so if people can see the quality of the work that, that I think is?
I think the bar's kind of set there with that Port Royal that we, we back up to. We want to make sure it's, it's compatible with that. That's why the larger lots, I mean, that, those are 30,000 square foot lots. We're not that. I mean, that's, that's kind of not what we're seeing these days. Not, a lot of the designs I do are just not calling for that. But I'm not sure that's on sewer, on sewer as well. We would be on sewer.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would differ. So we try to match those areas. That's kind of where we kind of focus on those larger lot widths, so we can hopefully kind of match up a little bit better with them. Plus, there is a, where I was mentioning McCart Road, the old McCart Right-of-Way, that's where one of the nature trails would be. So there'll be additional landscaping and setbacks, buffering, if you will, from the backs of those lots to the backs of the lots, which are actually fairly deep.
And I'm assuming the traffic would be entering and exiting off a two-lane road, correct?
Correct. Yes, off Gee's Mill. Yes, ma'am.
Very good. Thank you.
And it wasn't one of the conditions or anything, but we have contemplated doing our own traffic study there, just to provide staff with some additional support for any mitigating, you know, elements that we can, if there's concerns over traffic and whatnot on that, on that road. So, and that's why we went as far to go ahead and get the easements from the adjacent adjoining property owners, so we can clear that right-of-way, maintain it, so we don't end up with any issues.
Okay. And it, just as a question, any opportunities for ranch-style homes for seniors?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
There are some in that?
That, that's, that's the intent, is to have some. That's why there's that range of 1,800 to 3,000 square foot homes. Because there'll be some areas where there'll be some basements, there'll be some two-story. But yeah, that was actually something we talked about with staff, is like, you know, that would be an excellent, because those are, I'm not in the home building business. I'm in the design business, but I know that's desirable.
Yeah. We have a deficit in our community for senior living ranch-style. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Okay. Do we have anyone signed up to speak? Okay, then we can move to the next item?
Our next and last case tonight is a rezoning 2025-07, and that is the Southwest Irish Drive. And the applicant is Olmstead Properties LLC in the Battle Law PC. This is a 8.79 acre underdeveloped property. The applicant is asking to rezone the property from a C2 general commercial to RM residential multifamily for a 70-unit townhome community. The subject property, Zone C2, is currently Zone C2, is surrounded by townhomes on all three sides, on the east, south, and west. The future land use is mixed-use slash employment center. The site is proposing a 70-unit townhome community, with sidewalks are proposed on both sides of internal streets, recreation areas including a community gathering area and dog park, 29,125 square feet of proposed active open space, a proposed density of 7.96 units per acre. Code allows up to 12 units per acre in an RM zoning district. Sidewalks are proposed on both sides of the internal streets, and two and three-bedroom units with a price point in the low to mid 300s. 140 residential parking spaces, two spaces per dwelling, meet the code requirements, and 18 guest parking spaces. The code requires 23 parking spaces with one overflow parking space per three dwelling units. Internal and external technical reviews should have been received in your packets. But the fire department, they have said, stated that the project does not have a negative impact on the fire department responses presented. The visitor parking illustration allows the safe passage of emergency vehicles. The parking illustration paired with the no parking fire lane signs throughout will lessen the chances of cars parking on the street and decrease street width for emergency vehicles. And also, the emergency response time is decreased by not having to navigate parked vehicles. The Board of Education has the concern in combination with other approved residential development. Enrollment numbers will cause larger classroom sizes and possibly the introduction of mobile classrooms. Stormwater Department states that, based on the submitted rezoning documents, there are existing state water and wetland requirements that must adhere to the federal, state, and county ordinances. And our transportation department stated that the developer must provide a streetlight layout approved by the appropriate department prior to obtaining any building permits. And water, and our water and sewer department, they state that there is water and sewer available at the project site. The developer or representative will need to perform a downstream analysis to determine the capacity of the existing sewer system to accept the proposed flow. And the developer will be responsible for sewer system improvements identified in the analysis. After evaluating the case, staff is recommended an approval with 11 conditions, and the planning commission voted to deny. Should I read the recommended?
You can.
The condition, okay. Our first recommendation, the site shall be developed in compliance with the residential multifamily zoning district if adopted. Two, the site shall be restricted not to exceed 70 units. Three, the number of guest parking shall be amended to meet code requirements on section 22, 222-2. Four, a mandatory homeowners association shall be established and shall be responsible for the maintenance of all common area facilities. Five, the homeowners association covenants shall include a rental restriction of 5% of all townhome units. Six, all townhome units shall have a two-car garage. Seven, all grass areas shall be sodded. Eight, all utilities shall be placed underground. Nine, natural vegetation shall remain on the property until the issuance of a development, of a development permit. Ten, stormwater detention ponds shall be screened from viewing from adjoining residential properties. Screening plans shall be subject to review and approval by the Director of Planning and Development. And eleven, any structures in the amenity areas shall be constructed using exterior building materials that complement the adjacent residential structures. The amenity areas may be in a single area or in multiple areas. Amenity areas shall be accessible by five-foot wide concrete sidewalks. And we have the applicant here tonight.
Good evening, Commissioners. Hope you're doing well. My name is Josh Mahoney, and I'm an attorney at Battle Law PC, which is at 3562 Habershamon North Lake in Tucker, Georgia, here this evening representing the applicant for this proposed rezoning. It's great to be here with you all. It's been, I don't think, this is, I think this is my first time here with you this year, so I'm happy to be here.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I'm just going to be very brief with my presentation. I think staff did a great job of covering what it is we're trying to do. I just want to highlight a couple of things.
Okay. And can you start for the benefit of the public to talk about the location?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Maybe some landmarks to help them best understand where it is?
Yes, absolutely. That's exactly where I was going to start, actually.
Oh, very good.
So the property is located on the west side of the county. It's actually immediately adjacent to the city of Stonecrest on Iris Drive. It's also immediately adjacent to the Ellis Point Townhome Development, or the Hanes Bridge Townhome Development, which is in the city of Stonecrest. Actually, was able to drive past Ellis Point on my way into the meeting today. So if you were traveling on, I think I was, I think I was on 20, I'm not sure. If you're traveling on that road, you can see Ellis Point from, from the road. We would be right there next to it. But one of the things I wanted to highlight was the surrounding property. Staff indicated that to the east, west, and south of this, of the subject property, there are townhomes. And so we felt that rezoning the property to allow for townhomes would fit right in. Those two uses, they're identical and would not conflict with each other. What backs that up is the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan for this area is mixed-use employment center, which specifically allows for the RM zoning district, which in turn specifically allows for townhomes. Those properties that surround us all have that same land use designation, which is why you have RM to the east. And then, in the case of the city of Stonecrest, they have MR1, which is very comparable to the RM zoning district. So this whole area is really kind of homogeneous as far as zoning goes, as far as the land use goes, and then as we've seen, as far as development goes as well.
Are the adjoining properties, were they also zoned the same?
They have a mixture of zoning. So to the east, we've got RM. I want to say to the south, it's R2. And then, and then west is in the city of Stonecrest, that's MR1.
And this one is general commercial?
This one is C2 right now. Yeah, it's in this little block. It's the only C2 parcel. If you go even further east, across Ellis Point, you have more C2. That's been developed as, I want to say, a self-storage facility is over there.
Okay. And can we show that on the screen for the public?
Yeah, if you go back to the staff presentation, I think it's maybe the third or fourth slide? That?
Yeah.
Whoa, go back. I think that says 43. Go to 43. There it is. That one. Go back. Go back one more.
That's the one.
Right there.
Right. So the subject property has a star on it. That's C2. East, that's RM. To the south, that is R2. And then to the west, what's not shown because it's in the city of Stonecrest, that's MR1. Each of those that I just pointed out, those are all townhome developments.
Okay.
And then if, now that we have the presentation, if we could just jump to the staff conditions, I'd like to end talking a little bit about the conditions. I received the conditions from the planning staff. I shared it with my client. I'm happy to report that they accept all of the conditions. And from a couple of meetings that I had earlier this week, I received some concerns and feedback about our plan. And so we're ready to, in addition to the 11 conditions, staff have posed, proposed of our own. And I have just a summary of those tonight. I didn't have a chance to sit down and really get the, get the language ready, but I'll have those ready for you all tomorrow. And I will send that out in an email to each of you and to the planning staff as well.
Okay.
So that you all can review these proposed conditions. But what we're thinking is, can really be split into two categories. One has to do with the architecture, and then the other has to do with buffer trees and landscaping. When it comes to architecture, we're proposing that no two immediately adjacent townhomes can be identical on their facade. And we would do that with a mixture of materials, colors, a color family is what they're calling it. There you have facade features that match up in color. No two townhomes can have the same color family. And then there would be a two, two-foot offset between units to give some visual diversity. So you'd have this jog. That's pretty common when you see in townhome communities. So we're proposing to adhere to that. And then switching over to buffer trees and landscaping. What we've, what we're proposing is to maintain the minimum 20-foot buffer that's required by code, but also adhere to an average of a 25-foot buffer across the development. So in some cases, you'll have maybe a 30-foot buffer between the subject property and a neighboring property, such that across the entire development, it's a 25-foot average. average. What this allows us to do is maintain a little bit more tree coverage on the property, screen a little better, and make it a little bit more visually appealing. We're also proposing, if there's a situation where a large tree has to be removed, and by large, we're saying greater than or equal to eighteen inches, if that has to happen, then the developer shall be required to replace that tree with at least two one-point-five-inch caliber trees to revitalize that green space, make sure that the tree coverage is still there. And then lastly, the developer shall submit a landscape plan in accordance with the Rockdale County Code of Ordinances, showing where that buffer will be increased above the minimum of twenty, which trees that they're going to have to remove, if any, and where they'll be planting additional trees so that the county is fully informed about what is happening on this property when it comes to the landscaping. Again, this is just a summary. I'm going to send you a much more detailed list of these conditions tomorrow morning. That includes a tree survey, landscaping plan, and the like. But that's all I have. I'll reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal and take any questions you have.
So I will just ask, one of the concerns in our community is that we no longer want clearcutting to take place?
Yeah.
So would you have an arborist that's going to be working with your project for recommendations?
We can certainly do that, yeah. So I think there's still a chance to write that into the conditions.
Okay.
As part of the landscape plan that we'll have to submit to you all, you all have a chance to review it. I don't know if you, if you work with an arborist, they could take a look at it.
Okay.
But I could certainly speak to my client to see if they can hire an arborist to, when they do the tree survey, they're going to have to have an arborist pick out which trees are eighteen-inch caliber.
Okay.
Yeah.
And would there be, how would they access the garage doors? Would they be front-facing, back-facing?
They would be front-entry units.
Okay. Is there an opportunity for alleyways instead?
I'm not sure that it's possible on this property, given the size. However, I can, I can float that idea to my client and see. It would increase the impervious surface and detract some from the green space that we have. Right now, with the buffers that we have, we're about a thousand square feet above the required green space.
Okay.
Maybe if we're able to increase the buffer the way we've described, there might be a chance to, for some of the units to have alley access.
Okay.
But I'm not an engineer, I'd have to check with them.
Yes. Okay, very good. Thank you. Any more questions for the applicant? Okay, do we have anyone signed up to speak tonight? Okay, no one? Anything else? Okay, those are all the items to be heard tonight.
Okay. All right, well, that concludes our meeting for tonight. Thank you for your attendance, and I will say, just as a couple of notes, that the members here, we work to serve you and the community, and so feel free to reach out to us by email. We'd be glad to hear from you about your concerns about any of the zonings or your support of the zonings as they're presented. Additionally, I want to make sure that we invite everyone to fourteen hundred Parker Road this Sunday. From five to seven, there will be our first summer concert series that will kick off. Again, that's five to seven o'clock, and fourteen hundred Parker Road is pretty central in our community. It's where tennis center is, and then our restoration storehouse. So on the far right, you will see what we call the lawn, which is an area that has a stage, and that's where the band will be at five o'clock, so bring your chairs and come out and visit your neighbors. Thank you. Oh, yes, ma'am.
I have a question. I have a little listener, is he there?
Correct. First of all, we can't hear you. If you'd like to come up and talk to us, you can. Otherwise, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.